Tonight's board meeting to order, if you'd rise for a moment, I'll sign off by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is statements, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Um, I want, I wanted to pull.
I'm sorry.
Eight point oh three.
Eight point oh three.
I got it.
Are you pulling it for discussion?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, so are the approval minutes?
Before we leave the changes, we're also pulling agenda item eight point oh nine for no action, and we'll be bringing that back to you. So now the approval of the minutes. I recommend approval of the minutes from the special school board meeting November first, 2021, the regular school board meeting, November eighth, 2021, the special school board meeting, organization of the board, November eighth, 2021, an executive session for collective bargaining, November twenty ninth, 2021.
Salute.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're on our representation, so I think we're starting with our athletic recognition. Mr. Hogan.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Leesburg High School Boys Bowling Team as 2021 state champions. Leesburg Bowling, under the direction of Coach Jason Horton and his assistants Mike and Kalina Urban, are the 2021 Florida Boys Bowling Champions for all classifications. And just to give a little background, bowling only has one classification in the state, so it's kind of like for those of you who have seen Hoosier movie where Indiana's got one classification and everybody plays against them out of the size of the school. That's the way bowling is done in the state of Florida, so it's quite an accomplishment when you're competing against all classifications. And Leesburg isn't the highest, they're not the lowest, but it was really, it's really something for them to have done that against all of the different sizes of high schools of Florida. Some of the team highlights this year where they had a sixteen match winning streak, they ended the regular season in the district seventeen and one, they lost in the district finals, but the team never lost sight of their championship goals, and they refocused after their district final loss. When they got to states, they defeated Sebring High, Merritt Island, Melbourne High, and Cambridge Christian out of Tampa. They made it to the state championship match without losing a game. They won the best of five championship match against Cambridge Christian in five games, so it was very exciting, and I was following it very closely. And now we're going to meet their student athletes and give them their medal. Dr. Burns, could you give me a hand?
I know we had, okay, I was going to say, do we have people in the lobby that we were going to bring in at this point? Okay. And Dr. Burns, if you'll put them on there, if you want to rotate them around, and we can shake their hands, that'd be awesome.
Well, I'll call.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, whenever he puts anything, just rotate them this way, so they'll come and shake their hands.
So I mentioned, since Coach Jason Horton and his assistants Mike and Kalina Urban were not in here earlier, or some of those members in the whole school, recognizing their great work as coaches this year to all of the team, I went over all the highlights, just like you told me, Coach. So the first student athlete we're going to recognize is John Cadell. He was the most outstanding player at the district and had tremendous state championship. Second member is Truman Byrne. Christian Pruitt. Liam Pruitt. Edward Pearson. Tristan Whitney. Connor Zalaski. And Evan Posey. Congratulations.
Oh, okay, very good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So call you up?
Can we do like a little demonstration, like they can bowl and see how many school board members they can knock over?
Hey, how are you?
No, I, we're not in these photos. I'm hiding. Hey, congrats.
Well done. You did the work. Thank you.
Okay, that's super exciting. So thank you guys for coming, and thank you for having them this evening on the agenda. It's always fun to recognize our athletes. Super exciting. Okay, now we have culinary. Pop-up restaurants prep for culinary students. Mrs. Owens.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. As you know, we use the district spotlight videos as a way to highlight for the community some of the outstanding examples of teaching and learning happening in our schools with our teachers and students. And today, we want to highlight the hands-on learning opportunities that our culinary students are getting through pop-up restaurants in our community and restaurants right in their, right on their campuses, and how those experiences are motivating these students and preparing them for future success. So with that, we're ready for the video.
Lake County Schools is proud to offer several career and technical education options for our students. These CTE programs foster academic advancement by providing hands-on job training and teaching employability skills. As part of program participation, students are offered the opportunity to sit for and earn industry certifications or articulated credits. One of our most popular programs is Culinary Arts, which is present in all eight of our high schools. Aspiring chefs gain valuable experience running pop-up restaurants both within their schools and at county events such as the Renaissance Fair.
I absolutely love culinary. It's just been a great opportunity.
Being seniors, we get put with a lot other kids to teach, so we get a lot of leadership experience.
I want to learn how to be the executive chef.
I've been in social class ever since freshman year. I showed up throughout the half year. They really accepted me and really started teaching me things that I didn't know. I can say it already opened up so many gates and so many futures and possibilities for me now. I'm going to Lake Tech, and then I'm going to UCF.
My goals are to work in a higher-end restaurant or go to culinary school.
We meet all sorts of chefs throughout the year. I've learned a lot about teamwork since I've been here. I started doing culinary in middle school, but I never really knew what a team felt like until we started doing group projects.
I realized that I can grow my future. I can be what I want. I can do what I want.
Including culinary, Lake County Schools provides a total of seventy-four Career and Professional Education, or CAPE, academies. These include cybersecurity, engineering, early childhood education, building construction, agri-technology, and many others. Data shows that students in CAPE academies have higher attendance and graduation rates, as well as higher grade point averages. Furthermore, these students struggle with fewer discipline problems as they learn to function together as a cooperative and productive team.
Culinary has helped me step out of my comfort zone, talking to other people that I don't know, or being in situations where there's a lot of stress.
It's definitely helped me with my social skills. All my favorite teachers come in, so I get to socialize with them, see how their day's going. It's a heartwarming experience.
When I first got here, I had no clue what I wanted to be. I had like seventeen different thoughts in my head, ranging from astronaut to, I don't really know. But because of this class, I've been pushed and I want to join the culinary force, and I want to become higher up in the chain. I want to be someone you hear about on the news who's made an incredible new discovery in foods, who does food science and opens up restaurants all over the world.
Super fun. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, we're at the public input section of our meeting, and so I'm going to have Mr. Yocum.
Hi, Vance Yocum. I just escaped the Lake Tech board meeting, and we'd be happy to know there were no fistfights, tickets, demonstrations, or anything else. It was a pretty quiet group, and they had a clean audit, too. We always like to hear about that. I just wanted to cover a couple of real quick things. One is, I've been at several cities now. I was at your concurrency committee just this week, and they did a great job. They had a lot of data and information that was there, and a map, which I've got on order, I'll pick up tomorrow, it's as big as that TV screen, and it shows probably over a hundred developments. After seeing all of that and all the things that I know you guys, they guys, administration has to go through to deal with the growth, the unchecked growth, in my opinion. And, you know, it used to be that the conservative Democrats would want to stop growth, but now what I see is that, coming from Orange County, California, with their real heavy traffic, but it's all planned. There are no rivers, there are no lakes that cause windy roads. You don't have single-lane bridges out there. All these things are impediment to crap traffic here. And then the cities are either waiving discussion and requirement for a traffic analysis report, which would identify whether there's any mitigations, you know, and you got like a six-hundred-person apartment building going down by nineteen and five sixty-one, and there's no traffic mitigation, in some cases, no left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, or anything else. I think, and I realize that the school district is probably the biggest customer of the roads here in Lake County. You're affected probably more by traffic and traffic jams, and with your buses and everything else, and anybody else. And I would suggest that you maybe take, you know, have some meetings or something, a workshop, identify what you can do to get the county and the cities to stop approving all this rampant growth, because I believe even when they do the traffic analysis reports, I think they are skewed. And they are skewed so that developer doesn't have to do anything to mitigate the traffic, and it's going to get worse and worse and worse. And I think that's going to turn out to be the big issue here in this county. And so I would hope that you, probably if you can do anything, you're going to be the victims of it, I think, more than anything else. The other thing, just quickly, as you have on the consent agenda, the S R three program, I'm not going to get into details on that, just to keep in mind that nationally, there are a lot of angry parents that have found stuff embedded in that section related to learning topics. It's required, it's about twenty percent. That is what they consider to be anti-patriotic, what I might call a woke culture. And I know that we have a policy here and in Florida for no CRT, but just keep that aware, because you may have things that get embedded in that through the funding or third-party programs that maybe you'd rather to stop now, or at least know about, than wait until parents all of a sudden find out and start screaming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Zoe Degler? Did I say that wrong? Thank you. If you want to tell us who you are in the microphone, too, that'd be helpful.
Good evening, Board and Madam Superintendent. My name is Zoe Degler, and I attend Springfield Chatter School. I'm here to talk to you about the dress code, specifically leggings. It states in the dress code policy that any skintight clothing shall not be worn. That includes leggings. It says it's in C lower garments number six, along with biker pants, tights, and leotards. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole reason for a dress code is safety reasons or to not distract any others' learning. Wearing leggings is not there for safety, as it is worn in sports and exercise, so it's there for distraction of other students. Leggings show up the shape of one's body, meaning the shape of a student's body is distracting. Now, if it wasn't anyway distracting, and others were talking about it, or not paying attention in class, and did they proper punishment? The legging policy is not followed by all students. Only middle schoolers have been dressed code for it. But it does not apply to elementary. Taking it harder for middle school is not, is unprofessional. Rules should be followed equally by everyone. Many students have agreed with me that leggings are not distracting, from both male and female, and even some teachers. Please consider changing the dress code policy. They are not distracting nor unsafe.
Thank you very much for coming to speak to us this evening. I can tell you, it's something that we're talking about, for sure. Okay, Mrs. Cronin.
Board Members and Superintendent, I had to do a double check here, because I almost agreed with Vance Yocum.
Well, traffic in developments.
But tonight, I'm happy to see that you have the S R three proposed spending fund, funding on here. Twenty twenty-two is just around the corner, and I know I've told you this before, but this is a perfect opportunity to do things for your students and do things for your employees that you may never have the obligation, opportunity to do again. So I'm looking forward, when we come back after break, that we look into doing something with these funds. I want to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Erin Porter.
Good evening. I'm Erin Porter. I'm here to tell you about Lake County Schools' biggest untapped resource. We have on every one of our campuses someone whose job requirements equal those of our principals. Just like a principal, this person requires a bachelor's degree and a very specific master's degree, yet this person is often tasked with duties that are completely unrelated to that degree. Perhaps you'd guess that I'm talking about our certified school counselors. Let me describe to you how specialized the training to become a certified school counselor is by taking Florida Gulf Coast University's program as an example. Counselors will take fifty credit hours in a wide variety of counseling areas, from counseling theory to fostering resilience and student success. Multiple practices and internships are also required. I've actually brought copies of the actual course requirements to share with you guys. Upon graduation and obtaining a position as a school counselor, many choose to continue their training and keep abreast of current school counseling trends by joining the American School Counselor Association and the Florida School Counselor Association. The American School Counselor Association provides school counselors with its own set of standards, which counselors should strive to teach students in the areas of academic, social, emotional, and career development. The association also provides ethical standards for the counselors. All of this specialized training seems to be in perfect harmony with the Lake County Schools' counselor essential job functions, which actually has twenty-seven parts. It could definitely be argued that almost all of these functions are connected with the knowledge counselors have acquired. For example, quote, "Works with students in individual, group, and classroom guidance settings, provides leadership with school staff and students in crisis, grief, and loss situations, and most importantly, the development of a comprehensive guidance program that meets the academic career and social needs of students." I think I can imagine what most people in this room are thinking a school counselor does all day, and how much they directly impact the well-being of students, and it must be incredible, right? It would be wonderful if they were doing just that. However, there is one job function in the group of twenty-seven that states, quote, "Propose related duties as assigned." What exactly does that mean? Board Members, Superintendent Porter, and any curious people in this room, I challenge you to talk to an elementary, a middle school, and a high school counselor, to see how that one job function dictates their daily interactions with students. Find out what the counselors are doing each day as a result of the "Propose related duties as assigned." Find out how much these critical school staff members are actually using the skills they learned from their master's program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. We are on reports. I believe we're starting with Mr. Bryant. Excited to hear from you. I'm glad to see she's still here, so I think that...
Mr. Mathias has a copy of our last two meetings, our minutes, that he's passing down. Superintendent, I apologize, I did not print enough copies, so please don't bite my head off.
I have them, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Luke, Superintendent, and members of the board. I want to, before I begin my report, take a page out of Mr. Randolph's book, and again congratulate our bowling team at Leesburg for winning our state championship. And then I also want to speak very quickly about our culinary program. There is a burger at our pop-up restaurant. It's called the Randolph, and it was one of the clips in there, and speaking from firsthand knowledge, it is, it lives up to the name. So our, and our culinary program is always great. I've never had a bad meal out of there. Congratulations, Ms. Luke, on your chairmanship. I can't wait to see what you accomplish in your year. Fingers are crossed that it's not world-changing events, but we'll just have to wait and see. So now each of you has a copy of our minutes. So our committee last met on the seventeenth. We had a great discussion with Mr. Weeks, the head of IT. He addressed some of our concerns related to dual enrollment students, and one of the solutions that we kind of came up with regarding the limitations of the Chromebook was, in the future, a better device specifically for dual enrollment students. And then a more short-term solution was a easy-to-use work order form for dual enrollment students to submit requests for different websites to be unblocked and things like that. Our Thank You Teacher Challenge has concluded. It generated over two thousand response, student responses. The student governments at each high school are working to distribute those notes to teachers before we go into break. Mount Dora High School was the winner of the challenge, and they won a thousand dollars to benefit their student body. They had nearly fifty percent of their student body participating. And a majority of our meeting, our last meeting, was spent talking about dress code. I can tell you that we spent a solid two hours going through every detail, trying to make sure that we can bring some good changes to the board and to our principals. And on that note, I wanted to thank Dr. Felton for sitting through that. Yeah, she was very helpful and insightful on different things that the principals might be saying, and different, and how the board might be reacting to certain changes that we might have. I had a chance to look at the S R three plan, item eight point oh three, and I was glad to see some of the student recommendations made it in. Like the Superintendent has said in the past, the stakeholder committee was a really great discretion, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to serve and represent students. And I know that the final approval of the policy establishing the SSAC is on your agenda tonight, and I just, again, wanted to thank you all for giving students this platform and allowing their voices to be heard. And our next meeting is this Wednesday here in the boardroom, the fifteenth, at five PM. We'll be ranking those priorities of the dress code, on which ones we think are most important, and I promise you that leggings is at the very top of that list. And then I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and good break.
Thank you. So refreshing to have that committee and to have your voice with us this evening, so we appreciate you being here very much. Next, I'll have the other guy, the woman, his phone. All right, we're hearing from the Education Foundation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent. Happy holidays. I think we're all ready for a break. Apple Mart has had five hundred and ten teacher visits. The stores are going to be open this Wednesday, and then they will not reopen, obviously, during the break, but we have distributed thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars worth of supplies through them. Take Stock in Children application platform for the twenty-three scholarships, or two thousand twenty-three, and we will have fifty of those scholarships kicked off on December first, and to date, we have eighty-six ninth graders who have started their application. It remains open until January the fifteenth. The scholarship platform for the foundation for the class of twenty twenty-two opens January the third through March twenty-fifth. We have fifteen different scholarships this year, and we will award a total of forty individual scholarships from that fund, and they'll be valued at over seventy-five thousand dollars. Take Stock in Children has another Leaders for Life finalist from South Lake High School. She's already received a laptop, and if she is one of the six winners, this is a full ride. It is housing, food, transportation, books, fees. It's the opportunity to be included. It's the opportunity to be included in leadership training as well as internships. And all this comes through the Essofki Family Foundation. We had a winner a couple of years ago, and then we've had one other, two other winners. But if this one wins, we'll have three years in a row, which would be incredible. We received three thousand dollars from the Macklin Foundation and five thousand from the Clay Electric for our A C T prep program. We also received the William V and Mary L Penny Zeller Endowed Scholarship. It is specific for Lake Tech, but it's in the amount of twenty-five thousand. The Renaissance Fair was the largest and most profitable ever. We saw a thirty percent increase in our net profit. Our culinary and drama students volunteered over eleven thousand hours. We just saw a lot of video of our heads at the Renaissance Fair. What if I told you they had sold eighty thousand dollars' worth of turkey legs? I'd say that's two years ago. This year, they sold a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in four days versus five.
That's awesome.
That's good if you're not a turkey.
That's right.
Last week and this week are filled with holiday cheer. Tomorrow, we're hosting the principal party. And Wednesday, we have the district party, and we have a lot of surprises buried in there. So it should be a lot of fun. Upcoming events include Teacher of the Year, which is February the third. It will be an in-person at the Nation Gardens. It's a Thursday evening. The Take Stock in Children Chili Cook Off is February the fifth. The County Ride Robotics Scrimmage is at Taveri's Middle School on February the twelfth. The Take Stock in Children Spelling Day is February the fifteenth at the Nation Center. And the Skeet Shoot is February the twenty-fifth. So we've got a very busy February. We've had some staffing changes. We're really excited about them. We did lose Nancy Schwartz, who had been contract labor force for two years in our social media outreach, and she had just done a phenomenal job for us. And at the same time, we also lost Bailey Lorenz, who had been our little contract events part-time. And so we decided to combine those positions into a full-time position. And we hired Amber Costalano out of our Take Stock Division to fill that. And we moved Kim Pauling from Taveri's High School, when I tried to send her in. We moved Kim, and she's going to be starting this Friday with us to replace Amber. And then we had already promoted Casey Edmondson into the Development Director's position, and we hired Mandy Cook to replace her. So we have a whole, almost a brand-new team, very excited, and I can't top more than three minutes.
It wasn't us.
That wasn't me.
Somebody started on me. The next board meeting is an in-person meeting on January twenty-sixth at the district office. Any questions?
You said the district luncheon is Wednesday?
The district luncheon is Wednesday.
In my head, it is tomorrow, so.
Yes, and that's serving for the school board. Twelve o'clock starts at the Nation Center on the docks. So be prepared to start serving about twelve oh five.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, I must sadly report that Fred Morrison, who was my partner for about thirty-five years, passed away unexpectedly recently. Fred worked with me at Macklin Bernstad, and as part of that work, he represented the school board for probably most of the last thirty-five years off and on, taking care of all of the real estate issues that the school board had. As a matter of fact, tonight, there's probably five or six items on the agenda for tonight that Fred completed right before he died. Anyway, I just wanted to make note of that. And for those of us who knew him, we will miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Very sad. And ours. Okay, we are on our.
All right, our consent agenda tonight. I recommend approval of items eight point oh one and eight point oh two, eight point four to eight point oh eight, and eight ten to ten oh two.
Subway.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So just remind me, with our discussion, I know we have two items. Do we move eight point oh three to the top or the bottom, or does it matter? Does it matter?
Whatever you push.
Okay, all right. So why don't we start with that? Dr. Burns?
Eight point oh three?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to clarify. The, the board, we all worked for, what, an hour at a meeting and then at executive session on the S R proposal, and I felt like everyone made comments, and then nothing has been adjusted to the proposal. And I'm, I don't know that I'm very comfortable with that because, well, one, I really did want the science, and I wanted the arts stuff added. But I know you guys had comments too, and we discussed also potential raises, and I don't know if that much money has been set aside. And then I do know there's a large amount in here that's supplanted money, which I am okay with. My concern with supplanted money, supplanted just means we, instead of putting it in this box, we're moving it to this bucket so that, so that we can have more freedom with how we spend it, and there's less freedom in the S R bucket. So I'm okay with supplanting it, but I'm wondering if, since it's such a huge sum of money, do we owe it to the taxpayers to tell them what we're going to do with the supplanted money, right? Like, that's a lot of, these are kind of big chunks of change. And so, does it need more work?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. So I think there was something about the timeframe. I don't know if you want to speak to that. I don't, I know there were revisions we talked about, so if you want to.
Right, so certainly it was a priority of the board from the conversation that the monies be used to help with bonuses, raises, whatever that might look like. And as I explained, those items are already in here. We cannot attach a dollar amount to those specifically, simply because those are all subject to collective bargaining, and it does state that in the plan along with executive session. And so to determine the exact amount of money, we can't do that at this point in time until those things have occurred. We do have an executive session scheduled for January the tenth, assuming that that meets with y'all's calendar prior to the regular school board meeting. At that time, we will have a better idea after some additional conversations with our bargaining units to be able to bring you more information. So that is already in the plan. So there wasn't any change, because there's nothing I can change it to, because I can't give you a dollar amount. Specifically in regards to the science and performing arts, I also had to address those specifically, because I know that those were certainly a priority of the boards as well. One of the things that we wanted to ensure is that these monies that our schools desperately need in the area of science is not a one-time pot of money. And so when, one of the things that we wanted to ensure is that if we budgeted in the general funds, to your point, Dr. Burns, and using some capital funds, that we can make sure that this is an ongoing allocation for our schools, which I know is a priority of the board. Last week, Mr. Ward worked with our principal representatives for our middle and high schools to begin, I'm sorry, he worked with our, our science specialist, that was performing arts he was working on. I was working on science, worked with our curriculum department. They're working on the standards for what our middle and high school labs should have. And then we'll be sending that information out to teachers, asking for the condition. Do they have these things? Do they not have them? And then other additional things that they would like to see. We have, we have a pot of money that we're setting aside in the general funds to be budgeted for that purpose, and then some ongoing funds to be able to, every year, make sure that we are refreshing and supplying our science labs with those materials that teachers need. I know it's a priority. So in regards to the performing arts, that was another area. We were pretty sure, based on the guidance we received, that that would not be an allowable expense with these funds. And so again, we wanted to use our general funds to be able to provide some funding for the performing arts. That was also brought up from the committee as well. So we worked on a formula for what that would look like, and how do we, again, provide some ongoing support, as we do often for athletics, for our performing arts programs. So we did a little work. We pulled all of the students that are currently enrolled in those programs in our middle and high schools and began looking at what would be the most appropriate way to allocate those dollars, whether it's a dollar amount per student. And again, going back to the schools, talking with our teachers, we, Mr. Ward reached out to the two principal representatives and asked them to meet as a collective group and bring back to us what their recommendations would be and how to best utilize, or how to best distribute those funds. And so those are two pots of money that we've already set aside in the general fund to ensure that those things happen. Again, to make sure that they're ongoing and making sure that we can do them very soon, because we need the, I think our schools need those monies now. So again, remember, we, we're waiting for approval on these funds. We don't know when we're going to get approval. So rather than waiting, let's go ahead, get the information back from the schools and get the monies into the hands of our teachers or their classrooms. So that's why nothing changed in the plan. There's some certainly room within there to address other instructional materials. Those items are already in the plan, and the specifics of that we'll be working through once we get approval.
So, so I guess, I, I think there is, well, it's not printed. There is a dollar amount assigned to the additional compensation and so forth, because we have a pot of money of like seventy-three million dollars, and you can subtract out all the other items, and that tells you what's available left, right? So, and I, I think I shared the, the same sentiment in that, that I, for the time piece and knowing that we want to have an approved plan, so the money will then come to the district, that I was interested in approving. But I do think that there's some work to be done on this as well. Specifically, you know, I, I'd like to focus on that line forty, the additional compensation. I, I think that my sentiment is I'd like to see more drift that way, just thinking about the year that our, our employees have had, and also thinking about all the economic conditions that they're facing as well, with inflation and the price of, I mean, gas and food, just, you know, going up through the roof, that we know that what we're getting from the state for our teachers is just woefully short of what they, and, and the rest of our staff, really, what they, what they should be getting. And, and we're continuing to be handcuffed by these formulas that, that don't allow veterans really to, to get a raise, like what the, what the newbies do. So I, I guess, just, just thinking about that. So what, what does that revision process look like? Once we approve this tonight, so we can submit that in and, and be in the queue to get it approved? I mean, does that mean the district then goes forth and starts submitting all the purchase orders for all these other things, and then suddenly you kind of lose the flexibility to, to move some money around later? Or what does that look like?
No, I, I think we've heard the board loud and clear that that is a priority. And so again, we're not locked into those dollars amounts. It is, it's all subject to the things I mentioned a few minutes ago. We can, we can delete from any of those other lines. Once, once they've approved the plan, they've approved those line items. And we can take away from one of those lines and, and move the monies around, however the board decides. And I, I'm hoping by that January date, we'll have a better idea of how you want to move forward with that. So certainly I, again, there's, there's a lot of flexibility. And, and Mr. Ward, I don't know if you have any more details about the amendment process, but we, we did verify that, as with any federal funds, there, or state funds, there are always amendment windows where you can go in and make adjustments, and it's fairly.
Just, just for the board's information, we've had S R one and S R two. We've amended those applications several times, almost on a monthly basis. You know, as needs shift, we have the opportunity to write new things in if we need to, or take things out, and we've done that several times. So it's not concrete, it's a plan. It's not a document that we have to force.
So what I'm hearing back is that we're really focusing more so on these, these lines to be able to spend money in all of these different categories, but we're free till to move the money around, particularly because we are probably going to have some sentiments, I guess, at that executive session, and some targets or goals. And so it wouldn't all be obviously spent by them, because we'd probably still be waiting on approval, but we could.
Well, a lot of this is facility-driven, so it's going to take some bids, it's going to take some time, some procurement. So, and remember, this is, the intent of this plan is not to go out immediately and start, because we are in S R two right now. So we have plenty of S R two funding to spend now first. The intent of this plan is to start July for next school year and year after. So we still have six months to talk about.
So do we need to approve it tonight? Or do we, like, can you speak to the?
We have to submit the plan.
That's what I was going to say. Can you, can you speak to the, what the, if I remember correctly, and I could be remembering incorrectly, but there was something about we need to get it submitted, because if they said if you can submit it later, but then if you submit it later, you're.
The money's later.
The money's later. So you could kind of get at the tail end of it, and maybe you could speak to that.
That is correct. And this, my understanding of this is this has the same process as S R two, in that it has to go to the legislature's budget approval process too. So they took our S R two, G O E calmed through it, made some changes, asked some questions. And when they got done, they sent it to the legislative budget committee, and they approved it at that point in time. So there's a secondary approval that's beyond Department of Education. So they just, they, you know, they just asked that we try to get them in as soon as possible so they can get through that process.
Is there a situation that could occur where we get approval from both of those committees? It comes back down, and then we go through this process and shift dollars where we see and delete line items? That then, does that have to go back to them for approval when we submit those changes? And they could say no? What does that look like?
So the Department of Education, yes, we would still have to amend it through the Department of Education.
But not the legislative.
My understanding is, once it's approved, once it's allocated to the Department of Education, after that, it does not require to go back to the legislators.
So it's just a matter of if we want to, because I agree, I think everybody's hearing that. I don't disagree with you, but do we want to push it forward just to get it back so we can make the changes we want to make, or do we want to hold it?
Well, I guess, I guess what I want to assure is if, is that it come back to the board. Because technically, right now, it doesn't even have to go through the board, right?
Right, right.
So like, if, if we're going to have a transparent public process, and we're going to approve this, then we, we should maybe plan on it coming to the board, not just, like, you said, you've already changed S R two. But I don't, I don't know if that came to us, right? Because this is like, I mean, I just feel like this, this is a lot. So we should really let the public know how, how it's being spent, you know, so.
Can we bring it back then, after we, if it gets approved, and when it comes back and we make the changes?
Well, we'll have a better sense once we have collective bargaining.
Right, right.
So there's other things happening.
Right. I, I get it, and nobody wants to be locked in going forward, because we're not all on the same page with.
Can I ask Mr. Ward?
Yeah, please.
So you heard Mr. Yocum up here, and, and you and I had a conversation about strings that are tied to specific agendas. Can you talk about that for her? It was the, the other concern that I dealt with the group about was.
Yes, okay. So, yes, when you read some of the language of some of the CARES Act funding, there were assurances that were signed that required what some people believe might be C R T-related. And, and I think a group came to you and approached you about you guys had signed assurance that you have to go and do this. That was through the Department of Treasury, it wasn't through the Department of Education. All of our stuff is, except for the county money, has come through the Department of Education. Those S R assurances have absolutely nothing to do with that. It's just making sure that we're going to continue our operations and making sure that we're going to continue to pay our employees if we have another shutdown. Those are the main assurances that we have been signed. Has nothing to do with what we have to teach.
I just have a couple, I guess, comments.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I think that, I think all of us share the same concern about making sure that we take good care of all of our employees, teachers and everyone else. But I also think that we also understand that our first priority has to be to students. And I think that it is important that we at least secure the money, because with no money, we can't take care of anyone. And the later we get the money, the later people are going to have to wait for any of the services, because we can't spend it unless we have it. And if we don't submit the plan, it can't be approved. And so while I share Dr. Burns' concern, I believe in transparency, and I think, you know, everybody needs to know where the money's going. And there's nothing hidden. I think we also need to make sure that we're timely in getting this money, and we need to recognize that this is S R three, which is totally a new set of funding. And it's not a, you know, we can't spend it now. So we have time to make whatever changes we need to make.
So will we have a, if, like, if, when, whatever? Will we see a budget with this, with how we're going to, like, for example, the six million dollars for the math adoption, right? Like, that's going to be spent, whether it's spent on the math adoption through general or through S R. Will we see what this six million dollars will be spent on that isn't the S R money? Like, you know, that we supplanted?
You want to itemize?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we.
I mean, I think the public should have.
Our funding is, our funding is nowhere near six million dollars for instructional materials. So it's not supplanting instructional materials. These instructional materials are the instructional materials that we wouldn't be able to afford, because our funding is not high enough to make the adoption. So we're not paying for the entire adoption. We're paying for everything beyond what the adoption needs.
So that's not a supplement?
No, it's not.
There, percentage-wise, there's very little low percentage supplanted. It's, it sounds like a lot of money, because when you say four hundred fifty thousand dollars' worth of software. worth of software, that's supplanted, but four hundred fifty thousand compared to seventy-three billion, it's not the majority of it that's.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
But obviously, we're going to, we're going to buy the math series, right? So, I mean, to your point, we don't have five million dollars in the instructional materials line. And so typically, I think, on a major adoption like math or E L A, we use general funds for that, whereas if I recall, like, science, a couple of years ago, we only gave it to some of the grade levels and the following year, other grade levels got it. So, but math, I mean, I guess I don't see us doing that one by grade level, right? That would be everybody. And so I guess, to your point, I think it is kind of a supplant from the general fund because we're not going to spend the general fund dollars on that series now that we've got the S R funding to do that.
Well, you're talking about a six million dollar additional budget, non-budgeted item that you would have to bring from somewhere.
Right.
I think in the past, they've used some S I dollars to offset some of that, but even if you used the majority of our S I funding, it's not going to be able to cover it, so.
Can we also just ask, how do we know that it's going to be six million for the math? Have we already picked it? I just.
No, but we, they're aware of what is available.
Is it a historic amount or something?
I'm sure that's an educated guess.
What was that last go around?
It's very specific. For an educated guess, five thousand nine hundred twenty-four, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I think most of the major book companies priced comparably, and I think they know about what that cost is, so I think they're just using a large educated guess on this. But the E L A was close with their guess.
But I think also to Dr. Burns' point, you know, just as I was going through here, I was like, oh, wait, that's, wait, is this new or is this something we're already doing? Oh, that's something we're already doing. Oh, where's the funding source for that? Does that free up general fund dollars? Oh, no, that comes from S I. Okay. So I think, just as maybe you'd provided that really helpful document about here are the positions and what's the, what happens when this ends, you know, which of these positions are new and what's their funding stream for that, maybe it might be worthwhile to note, you know, which of these things are things that aren't really new for us, but, you know, what's their funding source, just so we have a concept of what money is really available, you know?
Yeah.
Because like, when I was looking at one of these and it was S I dollars, I was like, okay, well, that doesn't go back to the general fund, so that's money you can't use for raises on that one, but, you know, just to have an idea of.
But I also would caution you that, again, this is a one-shot deal.
Right.
Sure.
So to ever base permanent expenses with just getting that shot of money is a huge mistake. That is a slippery road. So we need to speak about that more in executive session.
I think you maybe meant raises or bonuses.
But we need to think about reoccurring versus this pile of money and if we don't get, we don't act like drunken sailors today.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for that, I'm just.
I was.
I've said that many, many times, so those are exact words.
Okay. So we have a, I think we have a clear picture that we want to go ahead and submit this document so that we can get, be timely in the return on the investment for the, for getting the money here.
I'll make a motion.
But then we can look at it. Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, just made a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we've got a second to approve the plan as it is and then it'll come back to us. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Everybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. Thank you for the discussion, I think it's important. Okay, so now we're on eleven point oh one, which is a public hearing and final approval of policy twenty-three seventy-one.
Yes, ma'am. The matter before the board this evening is final approval of policy two-three-seven-one, HOPE Scholarship. If there's anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak to the adoption of this policy, then please come forward at this time. Madam Chairman, I don't see you uncoming forward and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for this policy?
I recommend approval of item, ten point oh one, the final order, no, where am I?
Eleven point oh one.
Eleven point oh one. Public hearing and final approval, policy twenty-three seventy-one, I recommend approval.
Subway.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed.
And the second part of that item, Madam Chairman, is the final approval of policy oh-one-four-point-one, which is a bylaw, student representative to the school board. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this matter? So please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that separately?
Yes, ma'am.
A separate piece, okay, Superintendent.
I recommend approval of policy zero-one-four-one-point-one, student representative to the school board.
Okay, board?
So moved. Second?
You go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, a friend of mine reached out and was like, you're probably my school board member right now, but you won't be in a few minutes. And I was like, no, no, we're all still your school board members. When people are voted, it's voted countywide, so I may pay more, like, attention to Leesburg and I visit the Leesburg schools more, but I absolutely am a representative for all of the schools in Lake County and so are all of us, and I just wanted the public to understand that. So while we're changing, the board member districts, we're still board members for everybody.
This is the student representative.
Right.
Was this the student? I thought this. Well, I'll just hold that for the next one.
But that was amazing. That was a good trial run for eleven oh two.
I was thinking, oh, did I miss something on this?
Oh, I misread it, I'm sorry.
I thought you were thinking, Denkew's now going to be their.
I was. Wait a minute.
Sorry, okay.
It was goodwill, apply it to the next.
We'll apply it to the next time.
Okay.
That's coming down the pike.
Any other discussion about the student representation? Okay, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, okay. Eleven point oh two.
Oh, wait, it is there, okay.
Yes, it's there, it's just the next item.
Okay.
Oh, is there another bylaw in there?
Twenty-four twenty. Do you do that? No, you're finished with eleven point oh one. You now have eleven point oh two to do.
We're missing the twenty-four twenty-one, career and technical education.
The bylaw, not the student representative, so the twenty-four twenty-one.
Oh, there's another one.
Yeah, we skipped the C T one.
Twenty-four twenty-one.
Let's go back one more.
Not yet, Dr. Burns, just wait.
The matter before the board is the final approval of policy four, two-four-two-one, career and technical education. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward to the podium at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Superintendent.
Recommend approval of policy twenty-four twenty-one for career and technical education.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, I think we're done with eleven point oh one now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are on eleven point oh two, we have a resolution. Superintendent, I don't know if I'm calling Mr. Carr or if you're doing that one.
I think you're doing this one, this is the school board.
We already have a public hearing, right, Kelly?
We do.
Yes, so you're recommending approval of the resolution.
All right, well, I recommend approval of the resolution for the twenty-twenty census school board member districts.
All right.
Subway.
Second.
Discussion?
No, I. We are all good.
No, I think that was good to clarify.
It was very valid because I talked to somebody who had the same conversation this week about, wait a second, I live in this attendance boundary, but the school is assigned to this other school board member. Well, you get to vote for them too.
You can still call us.
You can still call us, we're all here.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, all right. Superintendent, on your report.
All right, had a couple of things tonight, it's been busy celebrating lately. We've got some people that I wanted to recognize. First of all, I want to congratulate Diane Dwyer, she's the principal of Umatilla Elementary School, and she was named Umatilla's Citizen of the Year, so congratulations to her, it's certainly a well-deserved honor and she's worked very hard in that community form, very strong community partnership, so congratulations to her. Also, I want to congratulate David Cohen, he's the aviation instructor at Eustace High School. He was recognized last week by Embry-Riddle University as the Aerospace Teacher of the Year for the region and for the state, so that was quite the honor, yeah.
Yeah.
And also, I had the pleasure of attending the Leesburg Chamber Gala where Mike Randolph was selected as their Educator of the Year, so congratulations to him. Just a couple of other things, this is certainly the season of giving and I want to thank all of our employees for their generosity, as many have donated at the school level and the district level to help some of our students and our families throughout the season. I also want to thank our generous community partners for their contributions. Harbor Hills developer, Michael Rich, and the Harbor Hills Ladies Charity donated ten thousand five hundred to Lake Hills School, and so I want to say thank you to them and to all the many outstanding organizations and community partners that we have, and I'm not going to steal Mr. Mathias' thunder, but I do want to say, we've got to, I know you're going to talk about our partnership with Insight Credit Union. So I'm not going to say anything, I'm going to let you talk about that one, but I do just want to publicly acknowledge and thank them for the very exciting thing that Mr. Mathias is going to talk about in just a minute. But one thing before, before I close, is another congratulations, and that is to Dr. Felton and her team, and she's got some very exciting news and she's going to come forward and share that with you all.
I saw it and I was like. Thank you, Superintendent Corrigan and Madam Chair and the board members. I am very excited tonight. It is like the dream of in my territory to get to announce this honor. It's related to that banner behind you, and you could say that for teaching, learning, and leadership side of the district, this honor I'm announcing is like winning a national championship. So we have received notice that we have the honor of being recognized as a model professional learning communities at work. So, yeah, the whole district. So just to tell you how special this honor is, we're in the company of twenty-eight districts in the United States and Canada, and we are one of only three districts nationwide with a student population of over thirty thousand students. To do this with a population of over forty-five, not forty-six thousand is truly, truly an accomplishment. And just so you know kind of what a professional learning community is, it's, we don't go to P L Cs, we are a P L C, and so they are schools and districts in which educators recognize the key to improve learning is for students to have ongoing job embedded learning for the adults who serve those students. And so the three big ideas are that we focus on learning, that we build a collaborative culture, and that we create a results orientation by always focusing on data. So districts and schools are recognized based on strict criteria, including demonstration of a commitment to the P L C concepts, implementation of these concepts for at least three years, and clear evidence of improved student learning over that period. Once measurable results can be seen, the district must explain its practice, structures, and culture and submit its application for consideration by the professional learning communities review committee. For those of you who have attended summer leadership and seen Anthony Muhammad was here a couple summers ago, we've had, I have often asked you for funding to allow for people to go to the P L C Institute in Orlando. The people that we hear from and get to learn from are the people who actually are on the review committee, so they're edutileveries in our eyes, so they are, it's a great honor for them to go to review our work. So they were most impressed with our study increasing graduation rates for all students in our district, and our commitment to ensuring students receive additional support through our immediate intervention and acceleration time shows commitment to ensure learning for all students. In addition, our ability to limit learning loss, interestingly enough, we pulled some data, during the pandemic, especially in math achievement, was also noted in our award letter, meaning that we lost less than other people did in Florida and around the nation. So that's, you never want to have that. We did less worse than somebody than, in reality, that was one of the ways to measure if we were still making progress with the pandemic right in the middle of our three years of data. So we are actually listed on a website called allthingsplc.info, which is a site managed by Solution Tree that provides a place for other schools and districts to read success stories and find research and other resources, so our entire application is on there. We also have to, we have to keep submitting data, they will ask for review every year, so our work is never done in this process, and so to be, to continue to be a professional learning community, we will, we will be continuing this work. It's not perfect, but we're certainly on our way to doing some great things. And I just have to publicly thank my team, Amy Cockroft, the Executive Director of Critical Instruction and Assessment, Katie Pearson, Executive Director of Academic Services, our three regional executive directors, Renee Dudley, Rod Felton, Stephanie Mayuski, and Dewayne Weeks, our Executive Director of Instructional Technology, for all the leadership it takes to be a P L C district, and the hours writing the application, as well as gathering data and artifacts we gathered from all the schools to help us create a model for the district application. I also want to thank Lain Obando, the Director of Professional Learning, for helping with the revisions, the data compilation, and the final submission. I also want to thank all of our leaders and teachers and staff because it's really them who are committed to the process and committed to having that common vision for all of our students. We really worked hard to create a system of learning for both students and adults. It's one of the highest honors a school district can strive for. I'm really proud of this and the work that we've done over the last five years, and I still contend that we continue to be a great place to learn. So I'm really proud of Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, congratulations.
I do have a few letters of condolence. First of all, to Arvid Floyd Benson, the grandfather of Steve Benson, Principal of Southlake High School, also Karen Samuel, husband of Carolyn Samuel, who's a retired Director of Human Resources, so condolences were sent to those families. And I just want to wish everyone a very happy holiday and hope everyone gets some rest and get rejuvenated and ready to come back and hit the ground running in January, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mathias.
So we'll tag team off on what was, Friday was an amazing day, not a little bit, but three years in the planning with the leadership of Mrs. Linda Shepherd Miller, the superintendent's support, our C T E support, and as she described it, our superintendent of three-legged stool, you need that business component, so you have that leadership, district staff, and you have that last leg. The last leg was Insight Credit, and the superintendent told the story, each other was in Randy Bird, who had the honor to serve with the school board, and she now works for Insight Credit, and immediately she stepped up and said they were aboard. So they opened ribbon-cutting a property, the first operating bank in Finance Academy. Now Finance Academy will teach our kids about the business side, the personal side, credit side, fill out loan application, and it's, it'll be an operating bank. So this was an amazing first step in what I hope to see in all of our high schools as we move forward, so this would be in my heart as well. Well done, everybody. Thank you, Superintendent, for your leadership. Continue on Francis, and like everybody, it's like, thank you everywhere. So it was amazing, so. And then the other thing I have is that the Christmas tree, Festival of Trees, I had the honor as your chair to represent your board, and it's a process that I started three years ago with Dr. Anna Marie, she had the idea of a funding source to be for our students to apply their talents to decorate trees, it would be displayed at the mall, and it would be sold, it would go through Carvin, I guess she left, but that fund, those funds go directly back to the, to the schools in the way of supplies. So this year, they raised fourteen hundred dollars, pretty good. I won the Eustace High School, and it was, it was a heart thing, which my dog and cats instantly loved, by the way. So it is now sitting on top of the piano, if they want to come and see it. So that was great. And, and I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and the hopes for a bright and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kudnay?
Well, I think, once again, we are very fortunate to live in Lake County. Where else can you go and have your district be a model professional learning community, and at the same time, the best anywhere in selling turkey legs? I mean, that's quite a. I think it was last week, Madam Superintendent, the School Board Association meeting. See, things go fast, but I had the pleasure of attending that, and I want to tell you that it was a very enlightening experience, Mr. Yocum. I learned a lot of things. I would be happy to share my lengthy observations and newfound knowledge with anyone who cares to hear. But one of the things that I would say is, it was just extremely pleasant to be able to tell people that I was from Lake County, and I always got the awe, yeah, you know, I'm reading about you guys, you guys are doing some good things. So it's, it's really nice when people from other places recognize that you're doing good things. So with that said, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays and be safe, and we'll see you back after the holidays.
Great, thank you. Dr. Burns?
I, I had the pleasure of, and this is a personal one, but my little, tiny, she's so tiny. My, my second daughter, or whatever, my, my, one of my daughters is in middle school, and I got to go to the Oak Park Band Concert for middle school, and it was amazing. I mean, it was great, it was, I was so proud as a parent, and it's adorable to watch somebody this tall play the tuba. She's, she has a tiny little spitfire, so that was a real joy, and I hope you guys will take advantage of some of the school concerts and, and performances that are happening right now. And I just wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Before you go, Mr. Don, Mr. Mathias, you want to go?
I had one other thing, and I would be remiss, that for nine years, sitting at this board seat, that I would look out in the audience, and there was a, the original oversight, if you will, it was Jim Kirkowski. And Jim was a member at that time of the Tea Party, and that he would, he would write to all of his constituents his observations. He was kind enough to always give us a heads up, like, send it first to us and see if we, make sure he got it right. That was, that was amazing. He, over the years, became a very good friend to me, and he passed away on Friday. His funeral is actually tomorrow. And he will be missed, as he used to sit in that very front seat, right where you're sitting, ma'am, in the darker yellow. That's where he always sat. So, so I just wanted to mention what a great, even at the end, when he was sick, he would, he would call me and say, I watched your school board meeting, and he would give me advice, and I will miss those calls.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Okay, Mr. Don?
Yes, and, and to tack on to achievements of Lake County, and we also had the state champion bowling team.
Yeah.
So, which, which kind of leads me into some of my thoughts. I think we've kind of been ambivalent on the subject of our meeting location sometimes. You know, do we want to meet here, do we want to meet there? You know, and I don't know, I guess I had the opportunity to hear some opinions from, from staff this past week, so I wanted to bring it back up again, but I thought, okay, if we can't even, if, if it feels crowded when we just have a, a bowling team in the room, then does, does the space necessarily meet our needs? And, you know, as I, I watched folks exit, I don't know if they were using the restroom, but I hear that's, you know, the common challenge of our staff having to escort and lead, so I, I thought I'd. I know y'all are kind of smiling at this one.
I heard, I heard the same sentiment from the staff especially, and if they would prefer to have the meeting, and we have better security and we have more space for constituents, I'm, I'm in favor of going back.
I've always been in favor of going back.
No objection.
Mr. Mathias?
Y'all have exhausted me with this.
Okay. We wore him down.
I genuinely love the intimacy of this space.
Me too.
And I love that it's not as pretentious as I'm sitting on high. That, that I enjoy.
Sure.
But I also understand, and we're going to sit and meet somewhere, so wherever y'all, wherever the majority wants to go, I'm totally.
Claire Motte.
No, no, we're staying here.
We'll meet in Oka Hunka.
But we'll still, we'll still work here, workshops will be here, all those.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Regular board meetings on the second, fourth.
Totally fine, whatever y'all want.
Perfect, okay, so we'll put that back together? Put the back together. Thank you, Mr. Don. Is that all you had?
And happy holidays.
I was going to say, I was waiting for that, okay.
Yes. Yeah, but, you know, and, and to echo Dr. Burns' point, go out and see a, a Christmas production or a holiday production from one of the, one of the schools, you know, even if you don't have a kid, go support the program, it's fantastic. You know, I had this incredible observation where I was watching at a middle school, the beginning band in the same room as seventh and eighth graders performing, and you think, oh my goodness, what a transformation that happens in that one year? So, you know, just as a testament to the, the amazing programs that we've got out there for our students, and great opportunities, so.
And middle school band directors, because.
Oh, I was so impressed.
Wow, I am always impressed. I went through a middle school program as well, and my daughter did too, and it's a miracle what they do. It really is, so, I'll echo that. Before I get into the, all of the Thanksgiving, because there are certainly lots to celebrate right now, which is the season, I also asked staff to work on a policy for public input, and so I believe we'll be bringing that back to a workshop in January, some of the findings that they've had, looking at other districts and what they're doing, and some ways that we can maybe protect employees in regards to being on a hearing situation, whenever it's maybe not the best protocol to, to practice. So we'll be bringing that forward in January for us to review and have a workshop on.
Excellent.
I also had Mrs. Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Dwyer. So Mr. Cohen, the new aviation person at EHS, we fought really hard for that program, and it was really, I did not think that the fruits of those labors would be so quickly, would come so quickly. So to celebrate him and the excellence that he's brought to the district and to that program is really exciting for us, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge that one. And Mrs. Dwyer is amazing, she's wonderful to have as a parent in that building, and she's wonderful for the community, so we were proud of her accomplishments. I also wanted to mention Christine Palmer, she's the art teacher at Triangle Elementary School. She's sent us pictures for us not able to attend, I was out of state last week, but she does an amazing job. I feel like all the schools just do an amazing job this time of year showcasing student work, and so I wanted to thank her for sending those to us. I was unable to attend Insight last week, because I got to go, I was invited to the students', students', I'm not going to get the W, is SWAT with tobacco, it's about their, their opposition to tobacco, and it's a new club in the county at Umatilla Middle School. And so they invited me to come speak as an elected official, and they show lots of interest into how to help students not, or to be tobacco-free. So it's just in addition to some of the, the things that we do at elementary school, and it was exciting to see middle, like, it was exciting to see a room filled with middle schoolers that were speaking about that, and so that was really exciting to hear. And so I appreciate the invitation from the community organization and from Mrs. Scheckler at Umatilla Middle School. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and get rest. And the last thing that I will say before I adjourn is, go Knights!